We're gonna get started. Regular council meeting of, what is today, Monday, May 16th, 2022.
To the flag, United States of America, into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mayor Loughlin, Councilperson Sexton, Miller, Dean, Goodweiler, Stolman.
I need a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
We got two changes. Roger, the six E pending dram is no longer pending. They have everything they need for approval. Eight K should have an extra zero, ten million should be, have one more zero.
Okay. All those in favor to approve the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
The consent agenda consists of the minutes of the May 2nd special city council meeting, the May 2nd regular city council meeting, a class E liquor license and class B wine, class C beer, and Sunday sales privileges for come and go. The class B beer, a five day license for the Down Under. For the CDG kickoff some summer event on June 4th, and also a class B beer permit and five day license for Hazel Hasky, Herb and Lou's. On July, June 4th also. In the claims for the month of May. Give me a motion, please. Got a second?
Second.
Well, any comments, questions? There are none, let's vote, Les.
Councilperson Dean?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Stolman?
Yes.
Goodweiler?
Yeah.
All right, presentations, communications, if anyone here or online would wish to speak to the council, would like to hear what you have to say, but we cannot act. Does anyone here would like to chat with us? There are none, we're gonna move on to a public hearing on an amendment to the current budget for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022. Is anyone here or online would like to address the council regarding the budget amendment? There are none, I will close the public hearing and move on to the resolution. Twenty-two dash forty-seven approving amending the current budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022. Motion, please.
So move.
Does anyone need an explanation? Got Adam, got a good explanation. Yeah. It's some unexpected revenues and some unexpected expenses that we have to report to amend, we have to amend the budget. Yes, if no one has any questions, we can move on to vote then. Go ahead.
Councilperson Miller?
Yes.
Goodweiler?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Stolman?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
All right, that was easy, Heidi.
Sure was.
Yeah, there you are.
I'm here.
Twenty-two dash forty-two, approving a water tower maintenance and inspection proposal from a named entity to be named by the motion. Looks like Public Works is recommending Suez. Unless someone wants to motion otherwise.
You're gonna give each party two minutes, max.
Good.
Should we do that before the motion then? Can I do that? I think I can. Yeah. Go ahead.
Yeah.
I'm trying to keep this down to two minutes. Last time we were here, obviously, there was a recommendation from McGuire and then in the meantime, my understanding is the price has been lowered by Veolia. My quick question would be, do we know how much that price has lowered since last, last time? Does somebody have a firm number of overall? I think it was, I don't know, thirty, forty, fifty thousand dollars, from my understanding.
I just looked at the comparables from each year. One of you was at thirty thousand dollars a year and another was at...
Yeah, of course, I'm talking about since last time, how much it's lower, if that makes sense, from the last price they gave. And the reasoning for that is, my understanding, I don't know the exact number, I believe it's between thirty and fifty thousand dollars, though. And just for a clarification, we had a discussion of apples to apples last time. There seemed to not have been a mixer, that was purely in our packet, in the contract, and Tim Ken vouched for this. We had a mixer in our program. And so, last time, the quotes were apples to apples, and yet the other company has come back with thirty to fifty thousand dollars lower. So I would kind of question how these quotes are now so much different, when previously, we did have a mixer in our contract. For simplicity's sake, when we bring forward a just general outline, we don't put every single detail in, in your packet. That's not something you really need, but in our contract, absolutely, that's something you need to have in a contract. Tim can vouch for this if need be. We did have a mixer in our contract already. So I would question, how come the price has dropped so significantly from the other company? Along with that, I do have a price from the exact company that they are using, it is the circle price. This is what people such as McGuire or the other company would be getting. That is how much it costs to us is per mixer, it is eight thousand six hundred and forty, and in case of Veolia, they may even be lower than that, if they're selling, you know, a certain amount, they give it a larger discount. Just a couple other quick notes, if we're really looking for apples to apples quotes, if the other company truly wants that, we're far from apples to apples. We're suggesting different painting, we're doing a zinc epoxy coating versus two coats of epoxy on the interior of both tanks, is what the other company is suggesting. We believe the zinc epoxy is a far superior painting coating system. The reason for that is if water does happen to get behind that epoxy liner, then the zinc will sacrifice itself before that steel, with a two coat epoxy system, water gets behind that epoxy, you're eating steel immediately. So we believe that our paint coating is far superior to that of the recommendation of Veolia. If we're truly wanting apples to apples quotes, we don't have it so far. The exterior painting is also different from both of us. So we don't have currently apples to apples, we're far from it.
Got another thirty seconds.
Okay. I would say outside of that, I would just hope you guys would pick the company that is, you know, we're a local company, we've been around a hundred years, we're family owned, we're right out of Sioux Falls. It's where we're headquartered, is where all of our companies, crews come out of. When in cases of emergencies, this is extremely important, we had, there's a town in Nebraska that's seventy people sick. They called McGuire immediately, because those are the people that needed to come do an emergency repair on their tower, because we're a local company, we're only two hours away from their town. So that's all I have, I hope you guys consider us at the end of the day.
Go ahead.
Thank you all, and first off, I never, it was never said that they did not have a mixer in their proposal. What we proposed that they do not was the mixer maintenance program, and that was the additional cost. So when we came back and quoted it, we took that part out, and I relayed that in the email that I sent also. What was changed was renovations on the south tank, they were in years two and four, and then they moved to everything to year two. So that would eliminate one mobilization and demobilization. So there's a couple option items right there. There is also some mix up with the vent and which tower got the vent, so, and I changed that in there as well. As far as an epoxy versus not an epoxy, we renovate tanks every year. We renovate thousands of tanks, and we have a good system, it's a standard system that is recommended through Chenemic, which is one of the largest suppliers of paint for tanks and paint coatings. And I stand behind it. We inspect your tank, we will be inspecting your tank every single year. So we will see if there's any degradation in hitting anything that needs to be addressed, and we will do it at that time. When you're on a maintenance program, there's always things that need to be touched up, updated, and things like that, and that's why you have us here. We are the ones that have the equipment and the manpower to do it. And so I would like to thank you, I would like to ask you that you would go with my company and myself for this maintenance program. I am local, I live in the state of Iowa, I cover just the state of Iowa, a little, a little bit of eastern Nebraska, but I live a couple hours from here. And we have a crew, a service, we have twelve service centers throughout the United States, the closest one is a few hours away, three to four hours away. So, and we have crews up here every week in the summer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess next would be a motion. Now, when the staff write up, I just went by like staff is back to Suez. Don't know if I asked. If you guys recommend a recommendation or?
Suez.
Based on price. Someone give me a motion.
So move.
Second for Suez, Yola? Cody? Okay. Yes, I really can't speak to any of the details. So, we rely a lot on staff. Any other comment?
The only question I've got, just so council can kind of hear, Melinda, does, when you first talked about this in December, and you mentioned that there would be very little to no change orders, with this new quote, does that still stand?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, any other comments, questions from anyone?
I got, I got a comment. I guess my comment is, this shouldn't be that hard. If we're doing, if we're asking for bids to do stuff, there should be, you know, if nothing, if nothing, a scope of work should be sent to these people. This is, this is wasting our staff's time, this is wasting our time. Here we are, the second week, we're talking, second meeting, we're talking about something. Yeah, well, but the second week, second meeting, we're talking about something that should be, and it's a decision that should be.
Well, I think we're learning a lesson here, too. It probably won't happen again.
I still stand by the integrity part of somebody got to see the other person's numbers, and now the other person's is lower.
Well, they were both given the chance to redo their votes, they were both given a chance, so. All right, any other comments?
Councilperson Dean?
Yes.
Stolman?
Yes.
Miller?
No.
Sexton?
Yes.
Goodbyler?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, resolution twenty-two dash forty-eight, setting a date to dispose of public property for the use of TIF. This is the crawl site. Second, please. Read that, Cody? So the the resolution is pretty long ones, but in there is the date, all that other stuff is in there just for the public knowledge of our intentions of the site. Is there any questions on the? Any questions? Okay, go ahead.
Councilperson Miller?
Yes.
Stolman?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Goodweiler?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Okay, so we will have a public hearing first week of June, no, June 20th, after it's published. Forward from there. Twenty-two dash forty-nine, resolution of support of the application of BBCO LLC for workforce housing funding and pledging city money. So this is the same entity, they are applying for workforce housing, I need a motion, please. And we'll write them a letter of support. Well, this is, this is a support, they'd like to see this resolution.
Acquired by the state program to have a letter of support from the city and one thousand dollars per unit donated, which would be covered in our development agreement once it becomes public.
So that's literally very little cash out of our pocket. Got a second? Anything else on this? Okay, go ahead, Leslie.
Councilperson Sexton?
Yes.
Goodweiler?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Stolman?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Twenty-two dash fifty, approving the preliminary plat for the Meadows subdivision, part five. Motion.
So move.
Second. Okay, we saw this last time, right?
Yes, we just, no.
Sorry.
No, it can be approval as quickly as you need to, we just wanted to make sure on the engineering end, there were no more questions left unanswered. So Dave is, okay, and so am I, with counsel approving tonight.
Yep. I didn't make that meeting, but
It was minor, we talked about road wits, and that's already in this plat, we talked about those bio swells, and what it takes to maintain those. But, yeah, it was as straightforward as we're gonna be.
Go ahead, Leslie.
Yes.
Goodweiler?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Stolman? Miller?
Yes.
Okay, insurance, twenty-two dash fifty-one, approving a broker change to Cottingham Butler for employee benefits, entering a twenty-eight E and intergovernmental agreement with the Iowa Community Trust governmental health and related benefits program. Motion, please. Move. Yep. Okay, so joining a consortium of...
So, one of the research that we did, Leslie and I did with salary surveys, in her experience with benefits, is we talked to a number of brokers, and so this broker out of Cottingham Butler in Dubuque, they help oversee what is called the Iowa Community Trust, so that joins other cities and counties together, so we get a larger, a larger insurance pool. So generally, we would get lower costs since we're on a large group plan. They provide training, so it'd help a little bit more on our HR end. They provide the same type of benefits, they did one quote already for us for in your yeah, that's right, short term and long term benefits and life insurance, those are already under. Wellmark will not give us their health rate, same thing happened to me in Garner when I went with this company. Wellmark will not give them rates until we sign a letter of intent for them to be our broker. I waited an extra year in Garner, just because it kind of makes me skeptical. But we saw a thirty percent reduction, we went to this company, saved the city fifty thousand a year. Ninety-nine percent of the benefits are the same, there's going to be more preventative care, since we're not on an ACA plan. So any type of preventative care gets taken care of, they have their own third party, so when we do flex spending, or we have any types of questions with employee benefits, they directly own all those companies. We've talked with staff, for the most part, I had, I had department heads vote, give recommendations, and they were in favor. You know, Max was on a similar program where it's self-funded, so he was able to talk with public work employees. All I can say is it worked out for us in Garner, it's worked out in a lot of other communities. Leslie has a good handle on, on this as well. I don't know if there's anything you want to add, Leslie? Okay.
Only one thing that I wanted to ask, I forgot, was if there's pre-existing medical conditions, are they still covered?
Correct.
Or, that's all I want to make sure.
Is it the same Wellmark plan that we had?
It'll be an ACA plan, so it'll be a higher deductible plan, but we'll self-fund that down, partially self-fund that down, so the employee will see the same cost out of their packet. And then the city will pick up the difference, which they'll be able to pick up the cost savings from the lower insurance, insurance premiums.
And not everyone ever hits their deductible, and so that's where the city saves money. Actually, and Garner had a little bit too much in reserves, believe it or not, on employee benefits.
Who's administrating that deductible? Who's, is Heidi having to do all that, or you, or the third party?
Cisco?
Cisco, yes.
And that's their third party administrator, so they'll administer the benefits.
Cisco, food distributor?
Different company, spelled differently, too.
So why? Just like what Mercer used to do, right?
So staff is recommending we do this, and it's gonna save us money.
Yes. You're on board, then? I think, sounds good. All right, I got a motion, right? Second? Any other questions, comments? Go ahead, Leslie.
Councilperson Dean?
Yes.
Goodweiler?
Yes.
Stolman?
Yeah.
Miller?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes. I see exactly what we said, maybe not next time.
In three, probably in like thirty days, we'll have updated health quotes, yeah.
Wouldn't that end up being twenty percent higher?
All right, pay scale. Twenty-two dash fifty-two is adopting a pay scale. So give me motion, someone. Chat. Second, someone? Um, I mean, I've looked at these numbers, but I'm kind of confused of the the various columns of low, middle, and high. And
That's something.
Say that again?
I said you can tell somebody ran their own business for the last thirty years, makes perfect sense to me.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm serious? Yeah. Okay.
It's more like corporate America.
Yeah, all right.
That's what I say, you can tell you ran your own business.
Yeah.
It wouldn't make any sense to anybody who runs a business.
So to help you a little bit, Roger, every, every year we'll add cola onto this when we do our salary resolutions every year. Every three years, we'll try and do a salary survey and update it. Basically, the scale on the very right is your hiring range. The low, medium, high is essentially, you could be with little experience or none, this would be the lowest you would start at. And you'll get gradual raises in intent, possibly more if your performance suggests that.
Yeah.
Ideally, at year ten, you would be in the middle, and at high would be around year fifteen to eighteen.
That's a max out, so someone could max out.
Correct. Correct. Correct, and when they're at that max, it would be cost of living. If they do something phenomenal, we've discussed the possibility of bonuses, but not an increase in pay, because that's guaranteed every year, so. But we do have to have a cap somewhere.
Did all this in-house, Tom?
Three years from May.
Nice, nice job, Adam.
Thank you.
And staff. Okay, any other questions, comments?
The only question I have, I know we had, maybe I just didn't see it, we have several that are moving on. A great plan to
Thank you.
The needs.
Yeah, there's a plan.
I figured there was, but I wanted to make sure.
Yes, added in the memo. So, right down here at the first memo, we have the above and below pay scale, so in twenty-three, there's I guess incentive bumps only, so anyone that has like an incentive, if they've already gotten it, that'll go up basically twenty-five cents. Clerks and parks and rec director currently do not have incentives, but through the salary surveys we did, we found that clerks do, and generally parks and rec directors do, when they get their national certification. If they get those bumps this year, they'll be much closer, if not in line with the market. Following the following year, it would be public works director, assistant library director, and all police. The following year would be water, depending on where the assistant library director's at, senior police, clerks if needed, and then I'll just leave an extra ten to fourteen the following year, but it averages ten to fourteen, we'll need to do. Water-wise, we're fine this year as what we've found with our building incentive program going away. Part of what we updated this year for revenue was we're seeing about an eighty thousand dollar increase in building revenue. So, one or two of our staff members here do a lot more on the building permit side than I'm comfortable with, so I am comfortable using that to help offset, I would prefer if I did more, it just, I don't know if I foresee that that happening, so there is a little bit of room there that we didn't foresee this budget year. But water-wise is looking good, and that's where most of those incentives are coming from. Otherwise, it's gotta be gradual every year.
Okay, let's go ahead and vote then, Leslie.
I got one question. Do we, do we foresee the growth of the city to be able to support this without it negatively affecting other things?
Not on the water side, not on building permit side. I don't know what our budget's gonna look like next year, but I would assume that some of that growth will hit us. I don't know what our budget's going to look like next year, but I would assume that some of that growth will hit us. One way or another, as we discussed as a committee, I think it will be, we're not hiring anybody new until we can make this work. So I can't directly say yes, a hundred percent for sure.
That's scary.
But I can't say that with anything at the moment, but I do know we have to have staff that we can depend on.
So the goal then would be to get staff up to par?
Correct.
We can afford. Before what? Your number four, three or four from now, when everybody's where they should be?
Yes.
We'll be able to afford what? Another Or police.
So we're saying right now, no new people for four years?
Depending on what next year's revenue, you may have to say that in the following year.
I don't think you can with the growth that's coming. I don't think you're ever, you're going to be able to say
I would say if we can't maintain our current staff with the way the market is changing, we're not going to have the staff to fill, unfortunately.
I just, these numbers are all great. I mean, don't get me wrong, you guys worked hard on them, but if, if we don't know if we're going to be able to keep our existing our existing stuff and pay this, I mean, I don't.
But we can't afford to have runway wages. That's what we have now.
Well, but if they are, if they are runaway, then how come this is going to cost us more?
Well, it's going to put, put their competency in into a bracket where they won't break, break out of it.
Didn't know we had someone running away wages.
We ain't here no more.
Well, that's, that the reason I came about this back in the early two thousands, I put a, we went through the whole thing. I mean, we're paying Danny Carr twenty-four dollars an hour, go to cemetery. You know, that's, that's an example of runaway wages. We don't, I don't want to have, get into a box us into a situation where we have runway wages. As fair and equitable, equitable all across, across the, the pay scale.
You have to match. Because everybody else is doing.
Other communities?
Yeah, because what happens when you, when you look at especially the ones that need improvement. City clerk, senior police officer. Especially when you look at low, and then you look at high or mid, which I would argue that our city clerk is easily mid or high. And what's stopping them from going for eight more dollars an hour?
Guys, I'm not saying this isn't a great idea. What I'm saying is, is how are we going to fund this? How are we going to be able to be guaranteed, we're going to be able to fund this without, you know, what happens if, if something something happens, the building stops, all this stuff is going up. Now, are, are we going to be ready to pull somebody, pull the plug on somebody? I mean, we can't have our wages keep going up if our money coming in is not going up.
It's not so much pulling the plug on somebody. We're just going to have to not do a project. We're just going to have to cut it. If it comes to that, we're going to have to cut a project. You know, you want cement poured down at the city shop. You know? Who's more important, an employee or concrete at the city shop? That's where it comes down to. But you, you've got to pay your employees for going above and beyond. And Dalco, that's guaranteed. No matter, you show up to work, it's guaranteed. You have a job, it's guaranteed. So this is for the people that are going above and beyond, that deserve the extra. So I'll give up a project to pay somebody that's going above and beyond. You have to keep your staff, you have to keep your staff happy and be fair to them.
So you've given the answer. The answer is, we'll just cut projects to do what we got to.
Same with the extra perks, just like my national training, until we're funding everything, I'm not going. I know it's a part of my contract, but some things come first. So when we're able to fund that, then I'll start going. But same thing with this budget, why it's not in there. So we'll have to continue to make sacrifices like that.
Okay.
Several hundred people, losing people, it's rough. Thirteen, you lose Leslie.
Have we, we don't have a lot of churn here.
I was Leslie right now, not gonna lie. I'd be like, oh, I didn't realize I was eight dollars overpaid.
Well, I hate to say it, but I was Leslie or the finance director. I mean, I've already talked to Adam about these positions, and it's not right.
We've gotten lucky that we have some people that work in some positions that either A, don't want to travel, or B, like the town and where they work. That can change pretty quick. See it kind of with the police officer. We train them and they leave.
Well, and I'm, I'm, I'm telling, telling you right now, guys, we can't compete with other towns that are better than us. So if, i- if you think we're gonna, you're going to bankrupt.
No, this is not, this is based on comparable cities of our size. This is Iowa City.
We did this off of what, Tipton or Tiffin?
Tipton, Tiffin, Hills, Center Point, West Liberty.
Everybody that have the same sizes we do.
Towns our size aren't near metropolitan Iowa City, but those cities you just mentioned are, so.
Well, I know, I'm, that's what I mean. They're even further out, but there's still getting these pay scales somehow.
They are.
Their taxes are high.
You either cut product, I mean, there's your answer. We either cut projects or we do.
Held our taxes down for, since I've been mayor for six or seven years now. You've done a really good job. All right, anything else before we vote? Go ahead, Leslie.
Councilperson Goodwiler.
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Stulman?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Okay, now I'll move on to the merit pay system. Um, resolution twenty-two dash fifty-three, adopting a merit pay policy. It's kind of like what you were just talking about. So, motion please. Second, someone? Seconded. So this is the actual system of procedure. Any other comments? Okay, Leslie.
Councilperson Dean?
Yes.
Goodwiler?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Stulman?
Yes.
All right, let's talk petty cash. Twenty-two dash fifty-four, authorizing a withdrawal of funds in the amount of six hundred dollars from from Fidelity Bank for the purpose of petty cash for Cubby Park concessions. Motion someone. Nick, I need a second. Jerry? Sounds like a good idea.
Can you just put this on the claims?
No.
This will keep the auditors happy, I mean.
Fortunately, it has to be, has to be, yes. Has to be approved by a resolution, and resolutions can't deal with.
Can't even be a common consent. I've never seen an Iowa city's agenda where they have to approve
You want to give me more authority and make me a city manager instead of an administrator, then you can do that. But until you change your ordinances, I have very limited authority.
All right, anything else? Go ahead.
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Stulman?
Yes. Yes.
Twenty-two dash fifty-five, resolution to fix a date for a public hearing on a proposal to enter into a sewer revenue loan and disbursement agreement. If you borrow money thereunder in the principal amount not to exceed ten million, two hundred, three thousand dollars.
I'll second it.
Public hearing, set a date of
For a reason, it has to be written this way.
It has to be what?
Written that way, I guess the
Yeah.
Sixteen twenties. Thou shall not.
You can thank the state of Iowa.
All right, this
We're setting a date.
Yeah, go ahead.
Councilperson Miller?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Stulman? Sexton?
Yes.
Goodwiler?
Yes.
First reading of ordinance seven ninety-three, amending chapter ninety-nine titled Sewer Service. Section ninety-nine point zero one, sewer service charges required. Motion please.
So move.
Second, anybody? All right.
Things are out of order here.
Yeah. I saw that earlier. Okay, so what are we looking at?
Ninety-nine.
There it is.
And it's chapter ninety-nine. Wow, that's kind of weird, isn't it?
All right, when I talked to the financial advisor, she does not believe we will hit that debt coverage ratio without raising rates one way or another. She gave
It's a big number, man.
We can reevaluate for next year, but at least for this year, she's recommending. She did give another option when I was talking about some of the questions you guys have had in terms of who's getting hit by the bills and what's the best way. She did provide an option of doing a flat fee of an additional twenty-two dollars per account. The con on that is, say, your business that spends more money or on water, uses more water, they're going to gain from it. Your resident that's older, that probably doesn't use a lot, is going to lose out on it. The benefit from Maggie's perspective is fees are easier to adjust down as we know more about growth. And if the cost of the project is not as high as what had been bid out. So that's, she liked that idea. I, as an administrator, I'm not. I feel like if you use it, you should pay for what you use, but that's for you guys to decide.
That'd be twenty-two dollars per account.
Which would be another line item on the bill. We don't have room for. But we do now. We don't have room for that. I do. And it's, it's just another line item you got to worry about. You got to keep track. It's just more work.
How does this rate compare with other communities? Does anybody know that? We got to be like number one.
And West Liberty is like twenty-three.
They've already done their upgrades on their sewer system, I wonder.
Tipton has this basic thirteen, and then every hundred cubic feet of wire is another three dollars and eighty-six cents.
Liberty, I believe, is higher. Dave, do you know if Solon's by any chance?
No, I don't, but I know they're planning to do some upgrades before too long, so theirs will go up significantly.
Well, Solon's was quite a bit higher.
Yep.
I guess at the end of the day, we don't have a choice.
I don't think so either.
We were one of the lower ones.
Yeah. I thought we were before we went up this, these last three times. I know we weren't. We equalized it, but.
We're probably more in the median or something now, probably.
All righty.
So this proposal is an increase immediately, right? July one, and then a year from July one. Anybody else got anything to say about it?
I still think we ought to just put in our ordinance that we're going to raise it two percent every year or something like that. Quit doing this.
The unfortunate part is, we didn't do this ten years ago when we knew we were going to have.
We did, we did, and they spent the money. They didn't keep up with the increases.
We can amend that. That's about standard, average year inflation's about two percent, so I'm sure that'll eventually equalize.
Think about that.
I mean, if we get to the point where we're like, hey, man, we're getting way too much money, we need to do something, then we cut it.
Yes.
If you're wondering, a hundred cubic feet.
One more dollar. Yeah, it's still looking better than some communities, so.
You could. Make sure you don't grab the thing that's really
All right, I'm ready to vote.
Yeah. Councilperson Dean?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Stulman?
No.
Sexton?
Yes.
Goodwiler?
Yeah.
All right, we're doing pretty good for time.
Don't say that.
CIP discussion.
I've been working pretty hard with Maggie and Dave. We're going to hit it a little bit harder this week and the next. But we're going to try and give you a couple options for capital improvement in terms of how extensive we want to do east side stuff, but otherwise, we're getting closer and ready to go for you guys on a final plan. Evaluation of myself will take place next meeting. Do you want to do that before or after?
What if he quits, leaves, then who's going to be here for the meeting?
Tie a chain into his desk.
All right, for that, Chris. So I'm going to try to send out valuations to staff department heads as soon. And when they get back to me, there would be no names on them. All on. Yeah. And then you guys can see those. And then you guys can see those. I'll either, I don't wanna send them out. I don't, I don't know how I'll get them. How do I get those to council?
You did it before.
I emailed, I scanned them and.
You know that or.
I emailed to you?
Yeah, that or you dropped them off at my house.
I think I dropped them off.
That'd be my guess.
Optic for them, well. Yeah, so look for those maybe early next week.
Um, just nuisance updates, um, six of eight of the first round have addressed it, which is pretty good. Um, in Garner, it was luckily, it'd be maybe fifty percent would do it after the first letter. So that's pretty good. Um, the one that you expect hasn't done anything, hasn't. So, uh, Chief and I will make a personal visit to him. Um, and then go by.
I don't worry that.
We, everyone knows where he is.
You don't even know who our employees are.
They're changing their faces all the time. Go ahead.
Go by to Greenview Drive. Overall, they've made a lot of progress. If you're fine with that, then I'm fine with it. Um, my previous council would say that's not enough and we'd have to change our ordinance.
Which one was it?
To Greenview and the front, in the side. There may be some more in the back. Yeah, so that's kinda, I assume there'd be stuff in the back, but um, let me know if you feel like we need a discussion on nuisances, we can. Um, otherwise, that's probably as good as we're gonna get the front side. Um, back will still need to work on. Uh, hotel feasibility study, um, is recommending sixty to seventy rooms. Um, mid-upper scale to upper scale, what are called boutique hotels that are supposed to incorporate the culture of your town into it. We've been talking with two firms. Um, who knows what'll happen with them, but, um, if you wanna see that, I can send those, that to you, but it's like thirty, forty pages, so. Can do, um, June twenty-fifth to July second, um, I will be in South Carolina. And I'll send you guys an email to see, have it for your records. Um, July eleventh through fifteenth is training for me. Um, that's state, statewide training, so I'll still be in the state, but just now there's those two, two weeks. Um, I respond to my stuff when I'm, I'm on training, since I'm still on the job, so.
We have a month where we don't, we only have one meeting this year. We don't do that anymore, do we?
I hope so.
I hope it was like a vacation.
Yeah.
It is. I don't know what we're doing, so.
Heard that story before. We're on vacation.
Old city attorney today. Um, Dave Schekinger, what do you have it updated on?
We continue to work with Johnson County on the Cedar Johnson Roundabout. And I just received the cost estimates today for the current concept. Uh, what they're indicating is that they recently bid a project in, um, Cedar Rapids area. And the costs were considerably higher than what they had done for project costs on the last phase of, um, Herbert Hoover Highway. So they've been, put some of these higher costs into our cost estimate and pavement, for example, went from, uh, fifty dollars to seventy dollars a square yard, which has about eighty-six thousand dollar impact on our project cost for the city. Uh, we also have some other items such as water main relocation that adds about a hundred thousand um, for four hundred and seventy feet due to lowering that intersection, a, a few things like that. So I need to work through some of this with them. Uh, some of this might just be them wanting to be a little conservative on the cost. Subdrain, for example, four dollars and fifty cents was a previous estimate. And currently, they're looking at fourteen dollars based on that bid. That's a forty thousand dollar um, net impact to the project. When we look at sub drains and outlets and so forth. So, in, in takes and, uh, other storm sewer components. So I need to sit down with them, go through some of this stuff, uh, make sure that we're not, uh, taking one project that has high cost, uh, and driving the entire estimate. Obviously, we would pay based off of what the bids are and we'd have to wait and see how that turns out. But, um, just a little bit skewed as far as, uh, the estimate they provided today and mentioned, I just haven't had enough time to talk through that with them since I'm still digesting it, but I will continue to work with them on identifying what that impact is to the city and I'll try to get back to you before the next meeting with.
The design, is the design in, in the final drawing phase?
The design is, in the final drawing phase, they have the concept, uh, and that's where they came up with the detailed estimates. They have quite a few things they've identified, uh, such as more intakes for drainage. Uh, they did have the sidewalk, which we asked them to do, which was another twenty-five thousand. So just a number of things that have added into this. And the design is, uh, I would say about sixty percent currently.
Is, you know if the county's still on board? I mean, on target for maybe July bid letting?
That's the goal, yes.
End of July, is that right? Okay.
This year?
Yeah. Yeah, be done in November, maybe. Pro gets it. Okay. Thank you, Dave. City staff, anyone else? Cory's gone, so. Um, Mayor and Council, anybody? June fourth is, uh, it's simply summer. Kick off to summer event down in front of downtown here. Um, they'll be closing the street in front of Herbert Lou's and there'll be a band playing. So that'll be fun. I'm gonna be in Des Moines that weekend, so hope you guys can visit. The Down Under will be selling their wares and the Herbert Lou's will be selling their goods. Anybody else, anything?
I got one thing. I was looking at this update on Wopsey Creek Project easements. Was deleting some emails, I had like ten thousand of them I was deleting. One of them I deleted was two thousand fifteen, two thousand fifteen.
We started that?
And it was us digging around with them gatskills about a easement for creek widening, two thousand fifteen.
Kevin is back. He is out at the moment. Um, he will get instruction to go as far as he can, so. He's done most of the process. He's tried to meet with them, he's served them the proper notice, so there's no reason why you can't actually go through the steps of condemnation, cause he's done everything, so.
You know what the brush site update was?
I'm a nerd out there.
Why, that's what was on Kevin's list.
I don't know what Kevin has to do.
So he has to get us an agreement with the property owner, so I was hoping he would talk to, update council where he's at. Um, just so you guys know, it's not Matt being slack down that, I guess. We're waiting on our attorney, so.
There may be another one or more.
That was just my way of him talking, so he knew that we were doing something, cause I know brush is important part.
Anybody, anything else?
Um, I did had a update from Tiffany. I thought that was in.
Met Friday, went through a mission and a vision statement.
Yeah.
And, uh, it's kinda fun.
Good.
So. We'll see, uh, we're gonna keep moving. I don't know what our next step is.
We'll just meet regularly, you know, every few weeks.
So the goal is, as soon as Hoover Days is over, we can hit the ground running with the new new structure, new mission, new vision. Potentially a new structure of how it gets, who actually runs it, which we got a lot to talk to you about that.
Yeah.
I haven't been invited for my attorney yet.
My fault.
Oh, my turn.
Hi, you got it. That's my fault.
Never home.
All right, anybody, anything else? Ready to adjourn? Motion, anyone? Arian.